Welcome to the April 2nd meeting of the Morganton City Council. We begin our meetings at 6:15. I'd like to call on Forrest Fleming to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much, and please be seated. This time I'd like to call our city attorney, Lou Vina, to lead us in an invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's all pause, and I would like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence to think about this. We always begin in springtime and Easter time thinking about transitions and rebirth, very appropriately, whether your tradition is Christian or otherwise. I'd like to have, ask everyone to pause and think about how that might translate into thinking about our city and our community. And I'll close with a brief prayer. Great God, we thank you for your presence with us today. We ask your blessing on the work of this council and all of its members, on all of the employees of the city of Morganton, and all of our residents and citizens as we go about our work and the work of this community. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Wendy Cato, council member; Forrest Fleming, mayor pro temin, council member; Lou Vina, our city attorney; I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor; Sally Sandy, our manager; Sidney Simmons, council member; Chris Hawkins, council member; Kelly Russell, our recording secretary; and I believe Becky Brinkley is recording, is signing for our deaf community, so welcome. Our first item of business is a retiree resolution. It's honoring Sybil Burnett. I'd like to read that resolution, please. Whereas Sybil S. Burnett was employed by the city of Morganton as Secretary I in the Electric Department on May 12, 1998, reclassified as Secretary II in the Electric Department on July 1, 2000, reclassified as Administrative Specialist on July 1, 2004, and whereas Sybil S. Burnett has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Electric Department and has given up her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 20 years and eight months, and whereas Sybil Burnett retired from the city of Morganton as its Administrative Specialist of the Electric Department on April 1, 2018, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Sybil Burnett and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Sybil Burnett adopted this second day of April, 2018. Ronnie Thompson, mayor; Sally Sandy, clerk. I need a motion, please.
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask Wendy Cato to present that resolution. Sybil, if you'll approach the microphone, please.
Sybil, you made it 20 years with all of us and put up with so many of us in the Electric Department, kept us straight, kept the lights on, and we really appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
And if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to.
I've enjoyed working for the Electric Department. I've enjoyed working with the city of Morganton and all the employees, and I thank you for the opportunity to be able to have done this.
Sybil, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sybil.
Next on our agenda is the presentation of a service pin. Our personal committee and city have decided to recognize long-term employees for years of service at council meetings. Tonight, we want to present a 20-year pin to Jason Houston. He's a captain with Public Safety. I'll ask Sidney Simmons, Councilman Sidney Simmons, to make that presentation. Jason, if you'll come forward.
He's too young to be here 20 years.
Go easy on me. Embarrass me.
Since I've known you, since you came out into this world, I'll present that to you to tell you how much we appreciate it, how much you guys think of you, and they paid me to say that.
I appreciate that. Mayor, city council staff, administrative staff at Morganton, just wanted to say how much I appreciated working for the city of Morganton for 20 years. Actually, it would have been much longer if my dad hadn't still worked at Public Safety. I would have been here much longer, but the nepotism would not allow me to do that. And so, this one thing good about a small town is that you know people and that, you know, that feeling that you are born in a place and you never desire to live anywhere else or work anywhere else. That's me. And so, I appreciate the city and the residents in there, and I look forward to another eight or so years of employment. Thank you.
Jason, thanks so much. Next on our agenda is public advocacy issues and an update from the History Museum of Burke County. I'm going to call on Jim Brinkley and Waits Gordon, who's on the Board of Directors for the History Museum, to make a presentation, please, and give us an update. Jim, are you going to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, and
Thank you, sir.
Madam Secretary. I'm Jim Brinkley. I am co-chair, vice chair of the History Museum of Burke County. I'm also chair of the Finance Committee for the History Museum, and we're here to update you on some of the events that are going on. Waits Gordon is our chair of the Board of the History Museum, and he's going to update you on some of the projects we've had and where we're going from here. I would like to add, I have really learned a lot. I'd never heard of the History Museum. I'm from eastern Burke County, down Valdez, and it has really been an experience for me to serve on that board. We're making every effort we can to try to get the word out to other parts, especially eastern Burke. Most of the people that visit the museum are either from out of town or they're from the city of Morganton, and we're trying to get the word out all over the entire country. We've launched a page on Facebook. We've gotten 600 and some friends already that, most of those are from out of town, so we're doing our best. But let me introduce Waits Gordon.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to come over a few minutes and kind of touch base with you on what we're doing at the museum. As you realize, the museum itself is downtown here, and what you guys are doing with the city in downtown and Sharon and all the rest is really helping to improve our museum a lot. We've grown, we were over 1,000 extra visitors this past year. We're over 7,000 people come in there. We only open 28 hours a week. It's completely free. We don't, we're one of two museums in the state of North Carolina that does not charge for tours. Everybody has to be accompanied by a docent, and so last year we had a total, we've got 66 regular volunteers. We've got, when we have special projects, the yard to be cleaned up and things like that, the bridge crews and all the things, there's 88 more volunteers that come and do the special projects. So last year, we had almost 14,000 hours of volunteerism. There's no paid employees over there. People like Claude Sutton, Wayne Hitt, Phyllis Wogan, Sandy West, give their life to that place. We're 15 years old. We just celebrated our 15th anniversary, and it's a pleasure to be there. I enjoy it personally because my family goes back about 250 years between the Waltons and the Gordons here in Morganton. My grandmother was raised at Creekside, so I'm kind of a history buff myself when it comes to Morganton. I love this place. I know you guys do. We, Louis will get into the financial part of it, but most communities, and we're going out to each of the communities within Burke County and asking to see if we can get some kind of financial help. We've been lucky the last couple of years, and Louis will tell you all about that, we were able to get some grants, and they carried us. But things are expensive. We've grown over 20,000 items now. We've got almost 21,000 items in that museum. When we take the responsibility of taking that item, we also have to preserve it, take care of it, keep it in the right humidity, and treat it professionally. And of course, all that costs money. So what we're doing here, a couple of other things that we have fundraising, we do a little bit of that, but we're limited by our leases. You guys have been great to us and helped us. We love the building we're in. It's fantastic. We recently got the annex next door because we're just blooming out with so many artifacts and so forth. So we appreciate what you've done for us so far, but the time now to look at, I'm a teenager there, and I'm 76. So we got people aging out that have been volunteers that are over 80, and they still come. Dr. Hamer still is at the museum every day. And you know, it's great to have that. They do great docent work, but there's going to come a time when we're going to have to hire some employees, an executive director, curator, and those type people, because we're all aging out. So I plan to be there as long as I can walk and move and give it all I can. We have huge military displays, the jawara, the dig out at the very site. We have a whole room that used to be your council chambers, donated to that for two years now until January of 2019, and that's a big draw for the area. So we appreciate what you're doing downtown. That brings a lot more people into our museum. So what you're doing is great, so we want to be a part of the culture of what you're doing. And Ed Phillips is a big believer in the museum, and everybody, he has a PowerPoint that covers the History Museum very well, that he shows to each of the businesses and all the people that are thinking about moving into this community. So we would appreciate any support you can give us. We're right around the corner. We'll do whatever we can to work with you, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Waits.
Waits gave you a copy of our budget for the year 2018. Should be in the handout he gave, and I'm not going to go over every item, but this to let you know how frugal we're trying to be. Our total budget for the museum is $61,961. That's our total income. Our total expenses are $59,961. Part of that income is coming from a savings account, is $28,961, what we call an unexpended balance from prior years. We were lucky enough, two years ago, that Senator Warren Daniel got a grant for the museum in the amount of $50,000, and that really, really helped us out. If not, we, I don't know where we'd be. We'd be out on the streets probably. But that, our annual deficit runs around $28,000 to $30,000. That's about where we are. We're not asking the city of Morganton to give us $30,000. If the city of Morganton could do anything at all to help us out, we would greatly appreciate it. If it's not, but $4,000 or $5,000, if you've got any monies available and any funds. And whether you can help us out or not, please come to the museum, come visit. We're open Tuesday through Friday from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock. Saturday is from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Next on our agenda, Morganton Works. Carolina's Healthcare System, Blue Ridge. Kathy Bailey is the chief executive officer, will make a presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here and share a little bit of information about your healthcare system. So what is Carolina's Healthcare System, Blue Ridge? We are two hos, a hospital with two campuses, a Morganton campus and a Valdez campus. We have two nursing home rehab centers, which is the Grace Heights and the College Pond Centers. We have Grace Ridge Retirement Community, Pfeiffer Wellness Center, and over 40 physician practices located across three counties. When we look at the numbers, we employ 1,800 teammates across our system. We have 315 licensed acute care beds, 296 licensed long-term care beds. We saw almost 55,000 people in our two emergency departments last year. We delivered 883 new citizens to Burke County, and we have 253 physicians and advanced care practitioners. Digging a little more into some of the numbers, in 2017, we discharged over 12,000 patients from our hospital. We had over 100,000 outpatient visits, almost 93,000 radiology tests, 23,000 EKGs, over 26,000 people visited our cancer center. Our pharmacy filled three-quarters of a million medication orders. We did close to 8,000 surgeries and endoscopy procedures in the hospital, over 500 cardiac caths. Our cafes served almost a quarter of a million, over a quarter of a million meals, and our physician practices had a quarter of a million visits to their offices. We do have financial challenges. That's not any different for us than it is for any other healthcare system. In 2017, we billed gross revenue of close to $1 billion. We collected $266 million. So what happens to the $692 million difference that we never see? It's the Medicare and Medicaid adjustments because they don't pay us what our charges are. It's all of the managed care companies, it's the charity care, it's the uninsured, and it's the underinsured. It costs to run your healthcare system. It cost us $717,000 a day. We invest back in our community, and the reason we do that is we are recognized as a charitable organization. We provide charity care to patients, we provide activities that help improve the life within our community, and our mission, vision, and values state that we give back, and we truly believe that we are friends and neighbors taking care of friends and neighbors. One of the ways we give back is to advance public education about healthcare matters. We do that through a close relationship with the Burke County Schools. We have the Sports Medicine Program. We did the 5210 Wellness Program. We do other activities such as Camp Med, we do teacher internships, and we have job fairs. Our Sports Medicine Program provides a certified athletic trainer at every high school. We do educational opportunities with these students, and in the last three years, we have saved the lives each year of one student with the free sports physicals that we've done. We've identified a cardiac anomaly that they went on and had cardiac surgery and are back playing sports because we found that and prevented that sudden death on the field. We promote the general welfare of the community. We do that through our Blue Ridge Medical Group. As I said, it's over 40 practices. It includes an urgent care, two express cares, a near-site clinic, and then we have multiple specialists within the community, and we subsidize those specialists because our population isn't large enough for them to earn enough to cover all of their expenses and the office expenses, so we subsidize that for them. We support the Good Sam Clinic to the tune of three-quarters of a million a year. We support the activities at Burke United Christian Ministries. We have implemented a Get Well Network, which is an online program for our patients, which includes education and email capabilities when they're in the hospital, and then we do an Arts in Medicine Program. We work to enhance the overall quality of life within our community, and if you were in attendance recently at Kama with our gift to the community, Jeannie Robertson was there, Rene Rongen was the first one last year, this is a way that we can give back to the community and say thank you for choosing us as your healthcare provider, because health is more than just the physical component, it's also the mental, the emotional, and the spiritual component. So a night of good humor and laughter goes to make all of us feel better. We provide financial assistance to the under and uninsured. In 2017, we had over 10,000 charity patients, and these are patients that have no way to pay for their care, but we treat them anyway. So that equals 890 patients a month, and then 9,283 under or uninsured patients, which is about 770 a month. We subsidize Medicare and Medicaid. We see over 75,000 Medicare and Medicaid patients a year, $62.90 a month. Medicare pays us about 19% of what our charges are, and Medicaid pays us 16.8% of what our charges are. So you can see the financial challenges that we continue to face. We do a lot of sponsorships in the community promoting health and wellness. We do our Lady Fair, which we just had last weekend, great attendance, an excellent event. We do the Historic Morganton Festival. We like being out there. It's an opportunity for us to talk to people and meet the people in the community. We do multiple 5K races, golf tournaments, and other festivals. We are participating in almost every civic and community group within our, within the geographic footprint of our system. It is a requirement for every senior leader to participate in at least one civic or community group, and you can see listed just a sampling of the ones that, where we are at the table, again, helping to make our community better. We volunteer at the Good Sam Clinic, at the Substance Abuse Network, at the Hospice and Palliative Care Board. We even have fire department volunteers, and you can see a picture of one of our Habitat for Humanity Saturdays. We recruit providers to this community to take care of you and your families. We're currently recruiting for another cardiologist, a nephrologist, an endocrinologist, and more family medicine physicians, and already this year, we are bringing in a general surgeon, a radiologist, and a gastroenterologist, who just started yesterday. The community benefit all told for 2016, which includes our charity care, our sponsorships, and the activities we do in the community, was valued at $74 million. So while we face financial challenges, we think that it's important that we give back to our community because we are a part of Burke County. And as I close, I'd like to close with this video where it is a great example of us as friends and neighbors taking care of friends and neighbors. Thank you.
I was on the treadmill, and all of a sudden, I felt lightheaded, and the next thing I knew, I was in the emergency room.
I was on a treadmill and noticed a little bit of commotion. At that point, it was very clear that something serious was happening.
We laid him down on his back, checked pulse. Initially, we had one, and then after a few seconds, lost the pulse, so started chest compressions. Fortunately, they have AED within the facility, so that was obtained. I would say probably at least three or four rounds of CPR. We delivered a total of three shocks.
We had recently done a mock code, and we did the almost exact simulation.
There was, it was a lot going on. It felt like the time was going by really slowly, but you know, we weren't sure that he was going to make it. You know, it looked, it looked pretty bad, but it all went just how we had practiced, you know, in a simulation we had just a week or so ago.
Everyone over at the, at Pfeiffer has training, you know, in situations like this. Everything really fell into place.
It is vitally important to be in a facility where there is an AED, whether it be a fitness center, a mall, a school. It can be the difference truly between life and death.
I think in the hospital, I think about 95% of patients who do code, unfortunately, they don't make it. So that was very encouraging for us and really everybody else that was involved to see him do so well.
What was really wonderful about his case was that he had so many people that converged to begin resuscitating him, so actually, by the time he got to us, he'd already had the key treatments happen in terms of, you know, shocking his heart and getting him back into a normal rhythm, and our whole team was able to stabilize him. We transferred him out by air urgently and monitored him very well.
I did not have a heart attack. My heart just stopped because of low potassium, dehydration, and a prescribed drug for anxiety. About two weeks after I had the episode, I started walking at Pfeiffer once again. Thank goodness I was at Pfeiffer Wellness, because if it had not been for the individuals there, my life would not have been saved. I wanted to tell my story because I want them to know about Pfeiffer Wellness.
As Chad works feverishly in the back.
Alan's in mid-stride.
He's mid-stride. He's doing well. I spoke to him yesterday, and he is doing extremely well. So let's see if he's going to get it back up. It looks like it's coming. A little sound, Chad. Kathy, I'm still amazed that it's 150 emergency visits a day if I did my calculations right. That's, that's a pretty amazing statistic that, to get that coming through the emergency room every single day. So a great presentation. Thank you for all you do for city Morganton, Burke County, and this area. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is a video concerning lineman Appreciation Day, which is April the 18th, 2018. Brooks Kirby, yes. Brooks, do you want to come up and tell us about, anything about the Appreciation Day or about, I think, a rodeo that may be coming?
Yes, a couple of things. First, we have a video to show, but before I show you the video, I'd like to just make a few comments. Tonight, the city of Morganton recognizes the men and women who keep, who work to keep the lights on and the power flowing to the homes, the stores, and the factories of this beautiful city. Nearly a hundred, 20 years ago, the elders of this city saw the need to embrace a new technology called electric power, and by their commitment to fund and staff a department to bring this thing called electricity to the people of Morganton, they demonstrated wisdom and courage. In order to make it happen, they hired electrical linemen who set the poles and strung the wires and made the connections that turned the cold into heat and the dark into light. Over the past 12 decades, Morganton has imported electrical linemen to continue doing so. Today, the city has approximately 12 linemen who maintain, operate, and repair the city's electrical distribution system. This system consists of five substations and over 220 miles of electrical wires. Linemen do their job during the winter, they do it during the summertime. They do it when it snows, they do it when it rains, they do it when the sun's shining and the moon's rising, and they do it all outside. So next time the power goes off for whatever reason, the people and the businesses of Morganton can count on their electrical linemen to get the power back on. We also have been selected by the Nick Ames Committee to host the 2018 Lineman Rodeo in North Carolina at Catawba Meadows on May 17th of this year, and more details of that will be coming as we get closer to the event. Right now, we have a short video, if Chad is ready, to show some of the linemen work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks.
At the heart of every revolution is a passion to defy the odds, push the boundaries of human achievement. Challenge powers so temperamental, only the bravest of men try. Though fearless, the risk was high. For these early few, the title of legend is reserved, authors of a sacred brotherhood. For by the flex of their arms and the strength of their will, they forged the backbone of the modern world, electricity for the masses. A grid connecting the east to the west, sparking the evolution of a new breed of man, a soldier, platoon, tested by the weather of the ages and refined by the struggles of their forefathers. From their legacy, these prodigies understand discipline, rewarded by the pride of achievement and the raw stimulation of work. For these loyal few, there's no greater honor than to bear the name, lineman.
Thank you so much, Brooks. A great video. Next on our agenda will be Chief Ronnie Rector presenting a very special award. Chief, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, mayor, council, matter manager, staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, matter manager, staff. On June the fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, at eleven fifteen a.m., Morganton Department of Public Safety officers responded to the Catawba River at a location behind Judge's Riverside Restaurant. They arrived to find Ms. Pedro, two small children, a stroller, and the family's pet trapped in the river. In a short time, the stroller was washed away, and Ms. Pedro was standing in the river, holding tightly to her children and the family's pet. A third child had already been pulled from the water by some citizens who had, had, saw what was occurring. Investigator Goforth, investigator Stotts, and investigator Dellinger were the first to arrive on scene. Investigator Stotts and Goforth jumped into the moving water as the river continued to rise. The water rose an additional three feet during the rescue. They were able to grab onto Ms. Pedro, the children, and their animal, and the, the pet, which was a dog. Investigator Dellinger entered the water to assist with the recovery of the children. Investigator Stotts began to carry one of the children to dry ground, while PSO Gabriszewski entered the water from an upstream position with the safety line, moving to the middle of the river to assist with the rescue. Investigator Stotts brought the one-year-old child to safety and then proceeded back to the middle of the river and retrieved the four-year-old child. PSO Gabriszewski held the rescue line in the middle of the river while investigator Stotts carried the four-year-old child to safety. At this point, investigator Goforth was able to reach Ms. Pedro and the family pet and get them to safety as well. On March the twenty-first of this year, Donnie Dellinger, investigator Donnie Dellinger, investigator Goforth, investigator Ryan Stotts, and PSO Daniel Gabriszewski were recognized for their acts of heroism on June the nineteenth. They received medals during a Morganton Department of Public Safety Award Ceremony at the comma. Investigator Dellinger received the meritorious service citation. The distinguished service citation for valor, for valor, and the medal for valor went to investigator Goforth. A distinguished service citation for valor and medal of valor to investigator Stotts. And a distinguished service citation for valor and the medal of valor to PSO Gabriszewski. The meritorious service citation is awarded to the member of our agency who performs extremely laudable and extraordinary acts. The distinguished service citation for valor is awarded to a member who performs an act of heroism in the face of personal injury with, as a, with the risk of life. So just like to say that we're very proud of the members of our department and, and happy that we're able to recognize them at a ceremony. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a special recognition. We have a lot of civic clubs, charitable organizations in our community and our county, but we have one who is celebrating their sixtieth anniversary. The Chesterfield Ruhrton Club. I have a resolution, a proclamation I'd like to read, and like for Mike Casey to come forward as the club president, while I read that, that proclamation. Whereas the Chesterfield Ruhrton Club was chartered on April tenth, nineteen fifty-eight, with twenty-three original members, of which only one charter member is still living. And whereas the Chesterfield Ruhrton Club assists the elderly and needy in the community with food, clothing, hospital bills, and other basic needs, sponsor local sports athletic programs, sponsor and provide space for scout troops, award college scholarships to local students, donate the clubhouse for school and community activities, promote and volunteer at the annual Burke County Fair, partner with schools for fundraising projects, provide a free senior citizen supper, hold a free annual health fair at the clubhouse, volunteer with the local Habitat for Humanity and other nonprofit organizations, complete community roadside cleanups, and provide members with timely and pertinent information through guest presentations at monthly meetings. And whereas the Chesterfield Ruhrton Club will turn sixty years old on April tenth, two thousand and eighteen, and will be celebrating with an anniversary dinner to be held Saturday, April seventh, at five p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Morganton encourages all citizens to give full regard to the past and continuing service of the Chesterfield Ruhrton Club, and be it further resolved that the city of Morganton congratulate the Chesterfield Ruhrton Club on its sixtieth anniversary and extend best wishes as its members continue to contribute to the betterment of this community. This is the second day of April, two thousand and eighteen. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Mike, congratulations. I see you have the, the member, the original member with you. I believe his name's Kenneth Day.
Kenneth Day, who, back in nineteen fifty-eight, chartered Chesterfield Ruhrton along with a group of other gentlemen. And Mr. Day is still with us, and we're happy that he's able to come here today and also be able to attend our anniversary on Saturday, when a lot of the national Ruhrton officers will be there to celebrate as well. Do you want to say anything, Kenneth?
Yes, I'll say a little here. Mr. Mayor, Council, I certainly do appreciate the fact of being invited here to receive this recognition. This was a journey that started back when I was very, very young. I was a royal ambassador in the church. I was a boy scout in the First Baptist Church. And then later on, I was in the J.C.'s here in Burke County, in Morganton, and then the Rotary Club at Marion. And I've served through many chairs in these different organizations, and they're all service-oriented societies and clubs. So it has been a starting point for me in community service. And I do appreciate the effort to be here and to, to attest to this. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Mike, would you like to add anything to that, please?
I, I would, because I think sometimes Ruhrton is one of the least known civic organizations. I just wanted to give a, a brief, some brief information about Ruhrton. It's a national organization dedicated to improving communities and building a better America through fellowship, goodwill, and community service. The first Ruhrton Club was chartered May twenty-first, nineteen twenty-eight, in Holland, Virginia. They'll be celebrating ninety years next month. Since that first club, Ruhrton has grown throughout the United States, and doing so has become America's leading community service organization. There are currently over one thousand and fifty clubs nationwide, of which Morganton has three: Chesterfield, Salem, which was chartered in nineteen fifty-seven, and Oak Hill, which was also chartered in nineteen fifty-eight. Many people ask about the name Ruhrton, and it is a combination of Latin words for, the first, for open country, rurie, and small town, tan, interpreted as pertaining to rural and small-town life. It is a community service organization with the purpose of creating a better understanding among people, and through volunteer community service, we make the area a better place to live and work. The slogan of Ruhrton is fellowship, goodwill, and community service. Club membership represents a cross-section of the community which the club serves and is available to all persons interested in their community. Unlike most community service organizations, Ruhrton rarely has national programs. Rather, each club surveys the needs of its own community than works to meet some of those needs. As Mayor Ronnie said, nearly all the clubs work with local organizations such as FFA, 4-H, scouting, et cetera. Many clubs sponsor and supervise community recreational centers, sponsor Little League and other athletic programs, sponsor anti-litter campaigns, help the sick and needy, and provide a wide range of other activities to help promote the communities where they are located. So we thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here tonight and promote Ruhrton, and for honoring Chesterfield Ruhrton with their sixtieth anniversary. But more than anything, I'm glad that Mr. Kenneth Day was with us today to be the charter member that started this sixty years ago. Thank you very much.
Mike, thank you so much for all you do.
Move for adopt proclamation.
I have a motion to adopt the proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda, a presentation by Jerry Davis, who is with the Burke County Chamber of Commerce. And that resolution, I believe, Jerry, would you come forward and give us some information, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sandy and the staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you all this evening. It's always good to be in front of city council. I'd like to first introduce the chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce, whom you have heard from earlier, Ms. Kathy Bailey. And I would have to add that in the spirit of the resolution that you have in front of you, one of the greatest assets we have to growth, new business, and innovation in Burke County is our healthcare system. I can tell you, of the five thousand, roughly, five thousand people who come through our visitor center every year, a goodly number of them are looking to relocate here, between five and seven percent of them. And a goodly number of those ask about healthcare, of which we're able to really shine. So with that, it's kind of the intro, Kathy.
History has shown that when citizens and leaders come together, especially here in Burke County, that we, we seize great opportunities and great things happen. Here in the eighteen sixties, the citizens rallied to build a train depot in Morganton. That made it possible for trains to deliver lumber so that we could build furniture and for companies to employ generations of craftsmen. We came together in eighteen ninety-three to welcome a group of religious refugees from Europe who settled in Burke County. And this year, we're celebrating the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the founding of Aldis. Fast forward to nineteen sixty-four, the citizens of Burke County voted by a seventeen to one margin to approve a community college. That set the stage for Western Piedmont Community College and its tremendous impact on the lives and the careers of thousands since then. Just two years ago, we came together to overwhelmingly vote for the North Carolina Connect Bond Referendum. And as a result, we're anticipating the opening of the North Carolina School of Science and Math and the new National Guard Training Center, and improvements to our college and our state parks in Burke County. So now we're presented with yet another historic opportunity. The Board of Directors of the Burke County Chamber of Commerce believes that implementing the reimagining Broughton Plan will create benefits that touch every economic sector in this county and community, including the city and county governments. Our resolution simply calls upon leaders in all sectors in the community to work together and to work collaboratively with the state to keep the momentum going with the goal of implementing the reimagining Broughton Plan. We thank you for affirming this goal by accepting our resolution, and we look forward to working in tandem with you and with interest across Burke County. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Thank you all so much. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a very special guest with us tonight, Samantha Woolard, and I'm gonna ask Samantha to please stand. She's, Chad, if you'll focus on her, there she is. This is a surprise for her. She is a senior at Saint Mary's School in Raleigh, North Carolina. She's shadowing Sally Sandy. She's going to the University of Texas at Austin next year, and she's gonna major in government and international relations and global studies. So Samantha, welcome. We're glad you're in Morganton for a while. Thank you so much. Okay, upcoming events at comma. Our shows are On Golden Pond, which is this Saturday, April seventh, at seven thirty. The Malpass Brothers, Thursday, April the twelfth, at seven thirty, who will later be at Merle Fest, I understand. The show Rent, which has actually won a Pulitzer Prize for the, for the script, will be shown Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, at seven thirty. We'll have a ribbon cutting for the new Morganton General Store Friday, April the sixth, at four o'clock on East Union Street.
West.
West Union Street, excuse me. Rotary Distinguished Person of the Year Award Dinner will be honoring Councilman Emeritus John Cantrell Thursday, April the nineteenth, at six thirty at the Community House. And Little League Opening Day will be Monday, April twenty-third, at five p.m. at Catawba Meadows Ballfields. Okay, next on our agenda is the Public Power Agency Number One, Sally.
No report at this time.
We have our consent agenda, which has four items. I'll ask Sally to go with those four items.
It does, and we would ask that you consider approving those in one motion unless somebody wants something removed and discussed separately. You have before you two sets of minutes from the regular meeting held on March fifth, and then from the city council workshop held on February twenty-third. You have a tax release proposal in the amount of nine thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-three cents. You have a budget amendment to receive twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars in insurance funds for some repairs at public safety to vehicles. And finally, you have a letter of endorsement to allow the city to apply for a SMART initiative grant, which is an arts grant through the North Carolina Arts Council. And this is to get into that program to begin a planning period that would ultimately, in a couple of budget years down the road, lead to an opportunity to get some matching dollars for some local art projects.
Do any members of the council wish to delete anything from the consent agenda? I have one question, Sally. The SMART initiative program, this is just allow us to apply. We'll be in competition. This is not getting the money. This is just allowing us to go ahead and apply, correct?
Correct. We would apply if we are successful. We would get an initial dollar amount that would be for planning purposes and training. And then you would find at least two budget years from now, an opportunity for matching dollars if we are successful.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Under new business, we have the consideration of award of a contract for construction, for the construction of the downtown Greenway Trailhead. Sally?
Yes, you, you understand that for a couple of years, we have been working on the downtown Greenway connector. And the first piece of that is the trailhead, which would sit up on Green Street on the lower end of Jefferson Street, next, across from the senior center, next to the plumbing supply place. We have dedicated some CDBG funding for this project. We received ten bids last week. The lowest responsible bidder for this project is Jeffco Grading of Lenore in the amount of one hundred thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Those funds are currently available in your CDBG budget, and what that would do is create a small parking area that would be constructed there for Greenway users, a service road connection for emergency vehicles entering Jefferson Street. When you get down there now, you have to back, back out. This would allow actually an exit for emergency vehicles and make some improvements there. Again, this would be the beginning of what ultimately will be the entire green, downtown Greenway connector, connecting downtown to Catawba Meadows.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to authorize and contract with Jeffco Grading of Lenore in the amount of one hundred thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents to construct the downtown Greenway Trailhead near downtown Morganton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is consideration of a resolution of intent and calling for a public hearing to close an alley. Louie? Sally?
Will.
Either one. Either one of us can talk about this.
I'll take the resolution. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have in your package an agenda summary that deals with issues concerning parking and alleyways downtown, particularly in the, the block that's bounded by north, between North Green and North Sterling, just north of West Union, or of East Union, I guess it is. As far as the alleyway goes, this concerns the alley, the narrow alley that runs from Green Street, kind of westward, back toward where Brown Mountain Bottle Works has their patio, between two buildings, the one, the Carolina Properties Building, that's owned by Rudy Bell, and the building on the other side, which I believe is Wells Fargo Securities, that's owned by Jim Belote. Beyond that building, beyond the Belotes Building, it widens out, as you can picture, the area goes over toward behind Gregory Jewelers and connects to the alley that runs parallel to Green Street behind that line of Leland Cypress is all the way to Avery Avenue. But what we're talking about here is just the little part of the alley right beside Jim Belote's Building. It's about ten feet wide. The resolution is, well, to close a public alley, there's no question, this is a public alley. If you all want to close it, you have to adopt the resolution of intent and schedule a public hearing, which would be at the next board meeting, to consider closing that unnamed alley. The description is in there. The reason why staff believes that you should consider closing it to vehicular traffic only, it would remain a pedestrian alley because it connects all the way through the block. The problem with vehicular traffic is it's too narrow that, and above all, when you get to Green Street going out, Green Street being one-way, that means a left turn in an extremely dangerous turn because the buildings are there, there's cars parked there. there, you can't see. The, the sight distance is narrow. You have lots of pedestrians using North Green Street who can't see, can't see them coming either, or vice versa. It's just too dangerous for vehicular traffic, and that's why staff believes you should consider closing it.
Do I have a motion?
Can I say just one? So, along with that are some parking improvements that the downtown parking committee has, has met and, and requested consideration for in this process, which would happen after you hold the public hearing if you decide to move forward. And that is the creation of 11 additional parking spaces, three of those handicapped on Green Street. Two would be at what is now the entrance or the exit to the alley, and then one down by the grassy lot that we owned, that we own where the farmer's market takes place. The other improvement would be to remove the Cypress trees and to create eight additional parking spaces on the back of that green lot. They would be gravelled. And since there is no permanent decision with what to do with that property yet, the farmer's market would continue to happen and be closer up to the sidewalk than they have been in the past years. So, we would be creating 11 additional parking spaces. Also, the recommendation to change the two-hour parking on Green Street to all-day free parking. And we'll tell you that because Sterling Street is so heavy and so busy in that particular block, this would free up and give some alleviation to the parking congestion that happens there.
I noticed from the photo we have in our agenda, if you'll look at Sterling Street, I don't think, I see a single empty place. Whereas you look on Green Street and you see there are spaces there, so.
Correct.
What's the wish of council? Do I have a motion?
Motion. Go right ahead, sir. Motion to call for a public hearing to close the alley off North Green Street between Carolina Real Living and Wells Fargo Advisors, per the attached map.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions for staff or council?
Mr. Mayor and Sally, I assume that with this closing of the alley, any vehicular entrance would come from, what, Avery Avenue?
Yes. Into the back. Or green, or green, through that gravel lot, right beside the green grass. I don't know a better way to describe it.
Yes, I see what you're talking about.
That already exists today. Does that make sense to you?
I see what you're talking about, right. Yes.
Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next on our agenda is a 30-day notice required for vac-
Excuse me. We, I think we need a motion for the resolution. We don't have it in here, but the resolution for intent, that would have been part of the other.
Was that a motion?
To call for a public hearing. We've got that motion.
Right. Oh, to approve the resolution that caused for it.
Approve the resolution, yes.
Could we amend it to say that?
Sure, or just have another, someone just move to approve.
I'll ask legal counsel to tell us what we're getting ready to vote on.
I would suggest that you, it's included, and what you really have to do is, is to call the hearing, but it should have also said to approve the resolution, which includes the call for the hearing. So, if someone would just move to approve the resolution of intent.
So moved.
Okay. Set, move to the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
We are resolute.
Yeah, we're resolute.
We are resolute.
Next on the agenda is a 30-day notice for vacancies on boards of commissions. On the Human Relations Commission, expiring terms coming up, Cecilia Surratt, Sergeant Josiah Brown with Public Safety, Ken Clark, and Sandra Bristol. If anyone would like to apply for these positions on the Human Relations Commission, please see Kelly at City Hall. Do we have any other items to come?
Or on our website. We also have them on our website.
On our website. Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, we are adjourned.